To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the physical with liberty and justice for all.
Manager project will be going next. In the meantime, I've asked to direct you to the first discussion. This is the work session meeting of the council. All work session items listed are subject to discussion only. A election panel will be taken. Primary purpose of the board session provides council opportunity for in-depth discussion. That is, if some comment is not provided for on the agenda, they may be paid on this. Council, in appropriate circumstances, three presentations may be presented by a member of the public or another party. On an agenda item specified by the mayor, they are limited or in the time of the president. First order of business that will stress capital improvement projects. The review of the proposed general government five-year capital improvement plan will be given. Those funded projects will be discussed.
Great, thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you for attending today. We're hoping that this meeting is going to be very informational for you. We are also going to be giving some recommendations on revenue sources and hoping for some, a little bit of direction on that as well as we move through this. So, we're going to go ahead and start with the agenda, which the mayor just reviewed, and we're going to start with our five-year capital improvement plan, which are the proposed general government projects that are being recommended in the fiscal year 20 to 24 years. It does not include our water, wastewater, sanitation, or airport ones. So, just quickly to go over our process this year, because we did change it up just a little. In January, our departments submitted their projects to be considered for the five-year capital improvement program. Each of those projects included a description, a timeline, the estimated cost, the operating impact, as well as a priority ranking. Those meetings with the individual departments were held to gather more information on each of the projects, as well as determine the highest priority and then also within each of the CIP categories. Then, the city manager selected the projects that were the high priorities, as well as had identified funding sources. And all unfunded projects, which is different from last year, they will not have separate worksheets included in the budget. They won't have a separate list as far as listing them as unfunded projects. Instead, they will just be recorded separately with a total cost, just a general description, and we're going to call them future project lists. There's no reason to put them as unfunded if there is no identified funding source. They strictly are future project lists until we can find an identified funding source for them. So, looking at the recommended five-year CIP, the general government funding sources. So, we have really only two dedicated funding sources for our capital projects, for the general government projects. And that is, in our capital projects fund, we have a hotel tax of 2%, generates just over $600,000 a year. And then we have our flood control tax, which is used solely for flood control projects. And that's received from Mojave County as a distribution as part of the flood control tax that they collect. And that is, averages about $589,000 per year. Now, we, we fund capital projects through many different sources, sometimes through our operating funds, sometimes through grants. But these are two dedicated streams for our general government capital projects. So, what does that proposed general government capital project list look like? So, we'll go over some of those projects in the next few slides. But first, we just wanted to give you a total of what, what we're including, and this includes the five years. This is not just fiscal year 20, this is fiscal year 20 through fiscal year 24. We have a total of just under $99 million in funded projects. Now, that doesn't come just from those two dedicated revenue sources. It comes from contributions and grants and operating funds, many different sources. So, you'll see in total, of course, our street projects are our largest funded projects over the next five years, just under $68 million. We also have parks and recreation at just over $16 million. And we'll share with you what we plan to, to recommend on that, or give an idea of what we could do with those, some of those projects. And then when we look at the next, the chart, the column chart, that actually breaks it, breaks it out by fiscal year, so that we can see what we're funding by category and the cost for each fiscal year, again, just under $99 million. So, as far as the actual projects that we're recommending for the five-year CIP, for general government projects, by category, we've got our facilities, equipment, and systems. And those are things like our fuel station that we've carried over to this year. We weren't able to complete it this previous year, although we're working on that. The, the full funding will start in fiscal year 20. Got our cart buses, that's funded primarily with grants. Our Public Works Conference Room is through the operating budget of some of those departments out there. And then our zoning ordinance update, again, an operating budget expense. It doesn't get funded with the capital items. Then we move down to our parks and recreation projects. So, probably the very largest one on here is the multipurpose gym community center. You'll see that we funded it. And we do not have, we do not have a dedicated revenue stream currently to fund this project. But, one of the ways that we can fund projects like a multipurpose gym center or community center is through the issuance of general obligation bonds through a secondary property tax. And so, that is one way that we thought of funding a multipurpose gym community center, starting in fiscal year 23. If it was an interest of the council, we could certainly go out and issue GO bonds and ask the voters to approve of something like this. That's one way that we can fund these. The rest of the items are the Centennial Park ball fields. We're actually receiving contributions from KSA on those. The ice skating rink is also contributions. Park site acquisition is our, that's actually coming out of our capital projects fund and some of those other projects. Pickleball, pickleball courts, a playground, and then the Sunbelt Sports Park. Looking at our street projects, probably the largest one on there is our Rancho Santa Fe Parkway TI Phase One. And then some of the roadways that go with it, as well as the Kingman Crossing Boulevard, the southern to I-40 piece of, of the streets projects. That comprises most of our street projects. But you will see some other projects on there. Some of those are funded with grants, some of them are coming out of the capital projects fund, and some of them are coming out of the operating budgets. Public safety, there are a couple of truck replacements on here, the police department lobby security. Several dispatch projects are on there as well, and most of these projects are also coming out of operating funds. I do want to point out the fire station two remodel and the training tower. Since we are not going to construct a new fire station two, we are recommending to remodel the existing at a total of just $1.4 million. And we are recommending the funding source of that to be part of our general fund balance, the surplus of our general fund balance. And then we have our flood control fund. So, there's just over $4.2 million over the next five years that we're recommending to fund for, for these types of projects. But I know that Mr. Foggan has talked about possibly instituting a stormwater fee of some sort, which would cover flood control, flood control projects. And when we get to the future project list, you'll see the need, you'll see the greatest need in our flood control area for, for projects needing to be funded. And so, what we're going to recommend is that we move flood control into an enterprise fund, and we're going to call that our stormwater fund, and possibly go out for, not go out, go through and adopt a fee for stormwater. And how that's going to take place, we'll talk about during the revenue sources portion of this presentation. But just to give you an idea, we have $4 million that we're planning on funding, and there are a lot more, as you'll see, that need to be funded. So, so you'll see that just shortly. So, just giving you an idea of what those, what the ending fund balances of our different capital project funds will look after the five years of funding the projects that are being identified in the recommended five-year CIP. So, we really have three different types of project funds. The capital project fund, our flood control fund, and we have still our I-11 fund. Now granted, we're not going to be collecting any additional revenues in that I-11 East Kingman Connection Project Fund going forward. We still have cash reserves sitting in there that will be utilized. So, you'll see in fiscal year 19, the three different, between the three different funds, we have, what is that, 3, 2, 5? Just over $11 million. And by fiscal year 24, based on the recommendation, we'll have just about, what is that, just about four, just over $4 million. So, looking at that five-year CIP future projects list, there are three categories that departments submitted project sheets that were not able to be funded. And they are listed here. Like I said, we're going to be calling that our future project list going forward. And so, you'll see on streets, we have $20 million in projects that are unable to be funded. I do want to point out that a portion of Eastern Street is currently recommended to be funded in fiscal year, I think it's 22 or 23. But the scope has been reduced because we're going to be receiving a grant, so we have an identified funding source for that. But coming up with the rest of the money, we don't have an identified funding source. So, a piece of that is sitting on our future projects list. And then you'll see a few other projects under streets also that are not able to be funded. Parks and Rec, we have a couple of projects there that we're not able to be funded either. And then, as I said, all of those flood control projects, just over $17 million in flood control projects that had to be moved to the future projects list until another, yes, sir?
Tina, I'm sorry to interrupt. Just to give a question about the projects that are recommended, are going to be recommended to be funded versus the ones that are not. I know that this year we were going to do, or there was a citizen survey that was done. I don't know if we've, we've seen those results yet, or how, how were those results used in weighting, you know, the whole list of capital projects?
Sure. So, part of our, part of the priority, the criteria ranking that the departments use, a portion are council's priorities and a portion are the community's priorities. And so, those were used as part of the scoring criteria when we, when we looked at these projects.
Okay, great, thanks.
You're welcome. So, are there any other particular questions on the project list before we move into the fund balancing, balance policy and uses? Really, it was, this was just to give you an idea of where we stand going into fiscal year 20. And when we get to the revenue sources, to give you an idea of what's still sitting out there that needs to be possibly funded, that are important projects that we may want to consider additional or new revenue streams.
I wish I was here. I'll throw it out there. I was going to be answering that, going to look at some flood control for the downtown area, because we do have problems down here, and I don't really see any project like that more than funded.
So, it actually is on the funded list. We called it, I believe, the downtown street scape. Let me go back.
So, that's just for flooding?
That's for the DCR. So, that's going to help us determine what we need to do for flooding, infrastructure, design across the board, what we need to do downtown. Yep, you're welcome.
On Eastern, that, oh yeah.
That is, mhm.
That far off?
Mhm.
So, I appreciate it very much. That was the council's. Um, and then some other thing for Rancho?
Participation? You're welcome. And I don't want to try to answer the questions on the CIPs for the different departments, who will definitely want to provide any sort of detailed explanation on them during our actual budget work session in the ninth and 10th, on the ninth and 10th. So, I'll do my best just to give a high overview of them. All right. So, moving into fund balance, policy and uses. We've had some discussions about our fund balance and the policy and the uses of them over this last fiscal year. And so, we felt that it was important that we discussed our current policy and talked about surplus and how we want to go about considering both of those in fiscal year 20. So, just to, just to read again what our fund balance is for the general fund. The city will maintain a minimum assigned fund balance in its general fund, ranging from 25% to 50% of the budgeted expenditures and outgoing transfers. This minimum fund balance is to protect against cash flow shortfalls related to timing of projected revenue receipts and to maintain a budget stabilization commitment. That's currently what we do, is maintain the 25% to 50%. So, that particular policy was formally adopted in 2013, and it was developed in accordance with GFOA's best practices. And those best practices state that we maintain no less than two months of operating expenditures. But, a higher, a higher level may be required in the event that we have volatile revenue sources. Since we only have sales tax and not a property tax, that is a volatile revenue source. So, we adopted a three to six month policy. We also state in our policy that surplus fund balance will be considered for one-time expenditures with, not with no recurring costs associated with that, expansion of programs or for new programs. So, looking at our fund balance and how that has looked over, since fiscal year 14, and what it might look like in fiscal year 20, or what we're recommending. I don't know if Mr. Foggan wants to take from here, or?
Uh, no. I have a phone touch for being late.
We actually got through capital of the five-year CIP.
Yes.
Do you want to circle back on that? That there were some good questions on that?
Perfect. So, just as we, the one thing that we wanted to make sure that everybody understood with the capital improvement projects are that in the past, our five-year capital improvement projects were a combination of things that we could fund and a whole bunch of wish list items. I've compared it to kind of a Christmas wish list. And what that did was really tell nobody anything about what we were trying to get done. And so, as we move forward with the five-year capital improvement plan, our plan is to have only items on there that have funding sources recognized. So, that it is clear that when you pick up our five-year capital improvement budget, that you know that there is funding source attached to that total, instead of just wondering, boy, I don't. I've been told that we have problems with capital improvement funding. I wonder if this one gets funded and which one doesn't. So, from now, moving forward, we will have the funded, which is the five-year capital improvement plan budget. And then we will keep a list of those items that we know are part of things that are, are needed, but have no funding source. So, there will be a list. It just won't be part of our five-year plan. And with that, so as an example, I don't know if you, you mentioned this or not, but one of the things that you'll see in the five-year, we left it in there as a, as a, as an example of something that we will have to take steps to have as part of our five-year capital improvement plan. And that is, and it's been on our list for a number of years. It's, it's the one that's listed as the multipurpose gym community center for a total of $9 million. So, we know, obviously, that we have not, or will not have $9 million to fund that project. So, clearly, that one is some, that is something that's going to take what we assume would be a general obligation bond. We will have to ask the citizens if they're willing to bond with using pledging secondary property tax to, to move forward with that project. So, we're happy to leave that project on the list. If the council agrees that they're willing in 2023 to start that project by asking the citizens, are you willing to bond for this project? So, that, if the council feels like, no, that's just not in the cards, then we will take that off. If you're unwilling to say, we're, we're not willing to ask the community moving forward that for a general obligation bond, then we'll just take it off, put it with the rest of the projects that are unfunded. But that would be an example of a capital improvement project that would need specific. There's actually no action to take, but it would, it would require the council to acknowledge that's a general obligation bond project that we're going to plan on asking the citizens for in 2023, so.
Question?
Yes.
That, that's a wonderful project. And yet, the future project that isn't on there for a bond is $7 million for Eastern. So, is there, and as I understand it, there's no funding available for that $7 million? So, how do you decide that, and we have $3 million?
Right.
How do you decide not to go out for a bond to complete Eastern?
Well, and I think that's, that's part of the challenge, is to see how much can we get done with that $3 million? And then reevaluate that next year to be able to say, is it really, was, was that remaining $7 million? Or was it, you know, did we get more work done than we were planning on, or did we get less work done? So, some of these things, you're absolutely right. There, there's going to be a need to say, we see funding, additional funding coming down the road, you know, is it another three years? Do we get another $3 million? And does that, does that push that project fast enough or far enough along for us to, to be willing to sit back and wait for additional funding sources? Or do we need to ask, is that one of those projects that we need to ask for some type of bonding exercise? But that's, that's the process that we're going to go through every single year to make sure that, that we're getting this five-year capital improvement plan right. And like I said, identifying the revenue sources, you know, is there, you know, as part of that Eastern, is there, is there some grant that we're missing, because we need to do that exercise too? Is, as new grant funding comes along, we need to make sure that that's being targeted towards projects that we want to see land on that list as well, so.
Ron, I have a follow-up to that.
Yes.
Since a lot of the, you know, since there are, there's no funding with, with capital improvement projects, CIP, I feel like that list really needs to be as close to the citizens as possible. And I know that you did that survey.
Right.
Do we have any idea like what the top five or the top 10 projects were that the citizens of Kingman wanted to see move forward? Because those would be the projects, if you're going to go out and ask people for money to fund, that I would think would make sense.
Right. And that's, and so, you know, one of the things that we did not get really super specific with is identifying exact projects. But, one general thing that we learned from the, from the community was that they, they are concerned, very concerned about livability, about raising children and having this be a, a great place to raise children. And we scored very low. And so, we're, we need to look for projects that are, that are going to help us in that area. Also, what, there's two other places that are of great concern. And those two were kind of the cleanliness of the community and the, you know, the basic overall appearance of the community. And then, the other piece to that was just the overall, how do people view our community? What's our image? And so, as we look at capital projects, those, for the, you asked, what are the community looking for? It's kind of exactly what the council did in their la, in the la, our last budget retreat, which is, it's livability, and part of that livability is parks and, and things for families to do. So, you know, there was a reason why we left the, this, like the community center, this multipurpose facility on there to address kind of both the community input part of the survey and what the council had as far as their, their retreat conversation. Now, how often, when you go out and ask the citizens, are they going to point out Eastern? As, you know, those people that drive on it? Yeah, okay. But, as a whole, you know, streets aren't really sexy. So, we have got to figure out how to work those, those infrastructure projects into this as well. But, those park projects, these ideas of how we increase livability have got to be definitely part of, of what we're looking at, so.
Yeah, and I don't disagree at all. I, I think we've done a few surveys, and, and Parks and Rec has always come in right at the bottom.
Right.
For, I mean, at least since I've been involved. So, you know, I think a majority of the community, I guess I thought that we were going to be asking, you know, hey, what kind of projects on this list do you want to see the city like really push forward?
Right.
And then that, you know, that would give the citizens a sense of ownership that, you know, we represent you and we're going to do everything that we can to move those projects forward within the realm of livability. And then streets, obviously, it's tied to public safety and everything.
Right.
Development.
Yep, yep, absolutely. Anyway, so this, this is kind of what the, the current project list is, is looking like. Obviously, we'll be talking about this in greater, in greater depth at our, at our budget meetings, so.
It looks like, what was the project that we just talked about? The downtown street scape. In, in this budget, it was maybe $700,000 or $800,000, and that's been backed off to about half of that. Is that right?
So.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so that's, that's because the 300, it's over $400,000, I think is what the project is.
Four seventy-five.
Is just for the design, design concept report. Once we get that report, then we'll be able to fund a mu, it'll be a much larger number than $700,000 too.
Got it.
Ken's, Ken's been waiting to ask a question.
Well, since we were talking about funding sources, and as an example, for example, you're, you're talking about the community center here, which is very important. Bullhead just opened their sports complex down there. What was their funding source for that, so that we can draw for that, for that experience? And if you could remind us, I'm, I know we've talked about it before, but I'm not remem, I'm drawing a blank on it.
On, on Bullhead's funding source?
How did they fund that community center?
Bonds. I'm almost certain it was bonds.
It was actually the school district that went out for bonds, is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so the city's partnered on that. I don't exactly know what their contributions were to that, or if they were even asked to, to contribute to that. They're, they're surely marketing it, but.
They are marketing. Would that be something we would want to do?
Absolutely. If the school district shows up and wants to partner, we would be, we know that sports tourism is a big deal in this country. And we've, you know, through this spring season, if you've been paying attention, we've had some really big tournaments, even just here in Kingman, full up on hotels, and it's, but these guys have definitely taken it to a higher level.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question about the, the Andy Devine ADA. Isn't that the project they're doing now?
It's, it's part two.
It's part two?
Yep.
Is this the part that's being paid with the grant?
CDPG.
Okay.
Yep. Yep. Everything that's, like I said, everything that's on this list right now has an identified funding source, whether it's grant, whether it's contribution from, you know. One of my favorite ones up there right now is the ice skating rink, and that's being pushed by private groups, which is awesome. Love it. So, that's what we have for five-year capital improvement. So, just kind of wanted to share with you that policy and that approach to, to the, to the capital project budgeting. Pretty, pretty big change, so.
We have just started fund balance policy.
Great. Sorry, I'm sorry to be, have been late, so. Go ahead.
No, I had shared the policy, how it was adopted, what surplus looks like, and we had just, we're starting this slide. So, I don't know if you want to, if you want me to?
So, the one thing that we wanted to talk to you, and as far as policy base is concerned, is we have a good fund balance. It's, it's what I would consider to be a best practice balance and a policy to be between 25 and 50%. Hopefully airing on the 50% side. The thing that we wanted to point out is that, and we wanted to make sure that it was clear, is that is that as we move forward, the pressure to pay off our public safety retirement debt, that's thirty million dollars. It has to be paid off or we have to be at, yeah, paid off, I guess is, that's the best way to put it, is twenty thirty-five?
Six.
Thirty-six, twenty thirty-six. And that is thirty million dollars. Our, one of the plans that we have had is that are, one of the recommendations that we have is that any money at the, at the end of the fiscal year, that if we're greater than fifty percent, which we, we traditionally are, whether it's three hundred thousand or two hundred fifty thousand or whatever it is, one of the things that we would, we would like to do is we would like to have it just as a kind of a, I, I would say, a standing policy that anything over fifty percent, just automatically, we would roll in to paying down that debt. It seems like a good, solid way to take care of this. Obviously, we're going to get to the point where we're having to budget this money, uh, some money in the general fund to pay this down. There, that, that's inevitable. But with that, we recognize that fund balance is also extremely good for taking on capital projects. One-time money, using one-time money for one-time expenditures, which is fiscally sound. What we're proposing and what you, what you would have seen in the capital, one of the capital projects that we're proposing is a fix to fire station number two. As you recall, we, we were going to build a new fire station, uh, new fire station number two. The bids that came in for that were extremely high. And when it was all said and done, we had five million dollars set aside to build that building and do the training tower or the training facility behind it. So, it'd be a brand-new training facility, a brand-new fire station. The reality was, when we got the bids back for the building and the training facility, it worked out to be about seven point four million dollars, seven point four million dollars. And as we started trying to get that project into that five million dollar package, it really ended up only, we only were, were going to be able to do the building and nothing with the training. And so, as we looked, you know, as Tina and I and, and Chief Rhodes looked at this, we started looking at, is it the size of the training facility? You know, what is it about the training facility that's the issue? And, and it really, the training facility that they were going to replace was about almost the exact same size as the training grounds that we have now. They were just going to add a new burn building and a new tower because the current, what they currently have is not adequate for any of, of that high-rise training that they, that they need. And so, as we've looked at that project, we thought, well, we can, we can use fund balance to, to take on that project. It seems important enough to the city, to our public safety response and training that that would be a good use of our beginning fund balance. Well, we've got, so we've got these kind of these competing interests for fund balance. We've got the, pay down the, the retirement system and we've got this one-time project that is, is really pretty desperately needed. And so, the, the thing that Tina and I, the conclusion that we came to is, moving forward, maybe it shouldn't be the fifty percent, so anything over fifty percent we would use to pay down, uh, our retirement system. It would really be anything over forty percent. Of that would then allow us to use some of this beginning fund balance to take on some of these really important one-time capital projects. So, that's what we wanted to kind of talk to you about. Obviously, we're not asking for any decisions, but when we, when we brought this out as part of our budget discussions, we didn't want anybody to be surprised that this is, this is what we're going to be proposing. So, the, the fire station remodel, training grounds upgrade is, is in the capital, five-year capital project list right now. It's in for this next year. And we're proposing that the funding source for that be beginning fund balance. But at the same time, acknowledging that we need to start paying down the retirement system. So, that's, that's kind of the, the policy change that we wanted to talk to you about in this meeting, so.
Manager, so are you saying that you're asking the council to change from our twenty-five to fifty percent?
Nope. Nope.
Okay, so this is.
No change there.
It would stay twenty-five to fifty?
Yep.
So, it's just above that?
It would, well, so that's, right now, what our, what our plan was, is that any money left over at the end of the year that put us over fifty percent would be, any, any of that money would be used to pay down the debt. And what we're saying is we're, we would like to, instead of be at fifty percent, uh, anything above fifty percent, we would like to look at anything over forty percent.
For this timeframe while we're paying things down?
Yep.
What is that dollar figure? Or about ten percent?
So, it would vary year after year. So, um, let me think about that, so.
Ten percent of seventeen million dollars?
One point seven.
Yeah, so one point seven. And when you say that the five million dollars for the fire station, we already have that, that's not actually money we have, that's a loan we're, we were going to get.
We were going to bond for it, yes.
Right, okay.
So, yeah, we, we did not have that money. You remember, we pulled back when the, when the TPT went on. That's, that was money that had been clearly earmarked as a project that we were going to use for, for, to pay that, to pay that debt.
Right.
Over the next twenty years, so. With that, with that being removed, it just didn't make sense. And like I said, when, when we made the recommendation to pull it, we were short by two point four million anyway, so we weren't going to get what we, we ultimately needed anyway. So, we, you know, we get a new building, that's awesome. But if we can re, if we can reclaim the building and get a training facility for a fourth or a fifth of that, seems like money well spent, so.
So, and, so your proposal is just to spend that a little over a million? We, we wouldn't be getting that bond?
Right. It would, it would be cash, we would cash flow it.
We would just.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And I just want to make sure I understood that.
Yep, you got it.
And I just want to point out, so for next, so assuming that this is the direction, the one point seven million dollars would go towards the unfunded liability, but that puts us at the forty percent, you know, fund balance. That's, doesn't necessarily mean that every year we'll be able to contribute, you know, one point seven million dollars.
Right, that's correct.
It'd only be if that funded builds itself back up again.
Right, exactly right.
But even at one point seven million, that's not going to pay off that thirty million dollar debt.
Well, one point seven starts making a pretty big dent in it.
It does, but, gosh.
How many years are we proposing to do that for? At forty percent?
Until we pay, at least, well, until either we build in some money directly into the budget to pay it down. You know, I guess what, what we're, what we'd like to see is how it looks over the next couple of years. And then when we hit that fifteen-year mark, look at, we're going to have to really seriously take a look at how much we're going to be needing to contribute to make sure that by twenty, that twenty thirty-six deadline, that we're at zero, so.
And the great thing about paying that down early is that as we're making payments on it every year, and assuming there's not many valuation changes, the rates, our contribution rates will continue to decrease.
We're discounted.
Exactly. So, we'll, we'll be making up some of that difference along the way as well.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, at the end, I guess that's, that's a great point. So, if we, if we owe thirty million, but, you know, hopefully, if we, we're paying it at a good rate, the payback isn't a total of thirty million.
Yeah, it's an assumed rate of, I'm going to say, just over seven percent is what's included in those assumptions.
Yep.
Well, we're making it down, but it's one point seven five, seventeen years without any other power.
Well, that, that thirty million includes that estimate.
Oh, that, okay, then, then that makes.
Yeah, if we could write a che, if we could write a check today for it, it wouldn't be thirty million. But we.
I see.
We don't have, we can't write a check.
Well, one point seven, they're making. I, I have to tell you, I, I still find this around forty percent. I, I, and maybe it's just been, been a lot of meetings today, but, okay, so we're taking the fund balance and saying, where's, where's, what's forty percent of, we think about forty percent of fund balance. Only thing about fifty percent goes to this debt reduction.
Right.
But that's, if, if it's two hundred fifty thousand, that's not going to be close to one point seven million.
So, the, the end of this year, Mayor, it will, we, it looks like, depending on, if, if the funding and spending continues the way it is, ending fund balance, we look like we will be over a half a million dollars. So, five hundred thousand dollars, we'll be five hundred thousand dollars above our fifty percent cap. So, and it, it could be, it could be higher, it could be a little bit lower.
Okay, so five hundred thousand would be accredited toward that one point seven. And then where is the balance here?
So, between the forty and fifty percent. So, our policy doesn't state that we can't fall below the fifty percent for one-time expenditures. It just states we need to maintain.
Yeah, in between that, right.
So, you're saying we would, we would utilize that forty to fifty percent to augment any debt, any needed debt reduction and to do one-time projects?
Yep.
So, we could actually drive it down to success?
Right.
That's what I thought.
Yep.
Okay, so we are saying, you're not asking us to change the policy, but you're asking us to technically approve fund, using our fund balance at forty percent.
Yeah, and that, that will be part of the budget discussion as well, because that's.
Technically, we could change the policy, except you're thinking maybe for some day.
Yeah, we, we don't want you to change the policy. We, we, we want you to stay between twenty-five and fifty. I mean, that's, the policy is a sound policy, so.
With the unfunded projects we have, I don't see how we're going to get that fifty. That's, okay, thank you.
I, I'd follow up with that, just, just, what I would say is, push all of it above forty percent to the, to the PSPRS and, and don't worry about one-time projects. I think one-time projects, you have to go out to the voters now and ask, hey, if you want this, you know, built, then you guys need to pay for it.
Yeah, I, I, other than.
The other, the other part of that is how well do we manage the PSPRS? I know that we had, Bacon gave a really in-depth presentation to us and showed a lot of other things that we can do in addition to this to really tighten up how, how we, you know, actively manage that on the flip side.
Yeah, and we've got some software proposed that will help us better track really what our, what our responsibility is and what it looks like. It's got modeling capabilities and so we'll be much more sophisticated in how we're handling that, but.
That is very thoughtful.
There's a board though, right?
We have a local board.
Who sits on that board right now?
So.
So, it's the mayor?
The mayor is on it.
And then who else?
I know our budget and tax administrator sits on it. I know there's an outside HR person from Unisource that sits on it and I believe to.
For the police side. Yep.
I mean, do we have any sort of fin, like financial planners? I know that you're on there, but do we have any other financial planners that sit as like technical advisory members or anything like that? I mean, that might be a good idea. Just throwing it out.
Well, it's a great benefit, just like that, eliminating that debt as soon as possible. Then that's for, for.
Right. But the thing that we, again, we're going to bring you, as, as we're doing budgeting, the things that we're going to do is we, there's this, these obligations, safety obligations that we're going, that we have to address and taking care of this building with just the idea that our living quarters are too close to the exhaust systems within the, within the fire station, so we've got issues in there. And then the training facility has got, we've got to, we've got to upgrade the training facility for the safety of our firefighters. We, there, there is no choice in that. And that's not some, you're not going to do a one-off to the voters for one point three million dollars. That's just, you're just not going to do that. I don't, I couldn't recommend that we do that. It's too small, right? So. Anyway, that's what we have for you on the fun, what we've been looking at, a fun, fun balance, so.
I was going to just.
Oh, you've got that.
I was going to share, Vice, Vice Mayor Lingefelter had mentioned what we have, what we did, what Mr. Bacon had proposed. I wanted to share that too, because we are also going to recommend that in fiscal year twenty, which is to continue to prepay.
Yeah.
Our full-budgeted payroll, PS, the contribution on the full-budgeted payroll, rather than in the past, we had always done it just on our actual pay period, payroll by pay period. And so, we're going to continue to recommend that as well. And the difference is a difference of an additional almost five hundred thousand dollars that we contributed in fiscal year nineteen.
Yeah.
And, and the value to the software that Mr. Fogan was referring to is that we never get the valuations from PSPRS and we don't even know how this is going to impact us until next fiscal year. So, the software is going to allow us to plug in our assumptions as we're doing it and be able to come to you with better data, so.
Thank you. Better modeling.
And then that was just Mr., Mr. Fogan covered that. And we covered this, so, thank.
Onward and upward.
Just as background, we have a couple of new council members with us that we didn't have last year. In fiscal seventeen eighteen, dates our staff in conjunction with an outside compensation professional, conducted a total cash and non-cash benefits survey with our market peers. And with that, the results reflected that the city or the city's employees' salary wages were not at the fiftieth percentile of the market. The fiftieth percentile was a compensation philosophy that the council adopted years ago, but it wasn't sufficiently funded. And what we found is we were actually closer to the thirtieth percentile and even less for some of our positions. We also conducted, again, that included some of our very common non-cash benefits such as group health insurance plans and tuition reimbursements and, and that kind of thing. And I found that we were lacking in some of those areas, specifically in the type of leaves that we provide, holidays and, and leave accrual balances that we provide our employees. Excuse my voice, it's kind of, kind of rough right now. We also conducted an employee satisfaction survey during that time. We asked employees quite a few different questions. We received sixty-nine percent return rate on that, that's pretty good for employee satisfaction surveys. And with that, we found that our employees said, hey, City of Kingman is a great place to work. You know, I, I like the type of work I do, I like the employer, but you know what? I don't like the pay. Employees felt that they were not being paid, uh, because miserable with their market peers and they were not being paid the value they were bringing to the organization. Our goal for the fiscal year that we're currently in, in two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, was to develop a compensation philosophy that established factors that guide the future of our compensation plan and a compensation philosophy that is sustainable. It also included developing a new pay plan that allowed flexibility and it was fiscally sustainable. And then we also worked on developing a total compensation value statement for our employees so that they knew that it isn't just base pay that you're receiving from the City of Kingman, you're receiving a lot more value that, that sometimes isn't recognized. Before we get into the actual project, one of the things that needs to be factored when you're looking at a compensation project is to, to take a look at what's happening at the national, regional and local level. And here, I illustrate the leading compensation industry experts, their predictions for two thousand and nineteen on cash compensation trends. This is what you see on this slide. Here is the CPI versus the City of Kingman history. Here, as you know, the CPI. Here, as you know, the CPI measures the purchasing power of the mighty dollar. As compared to the City of Kingman's wage increases, you can see here that we're not keeping pace with CPI. And over the years, our employees' purchasing power has diminished. Here, you're looking more at the local level. These are our market peers that we compared ourselves to. This is what they've been doing this, this fiscal year. This is what they provided their employees. In the last two years that we've collected this type of data from our market peers, this looks much like last year. And with the City of Kingman not providing wage increases, we are, again, lacking on the local level as well. The City of Kingman's ten-year turnover trend looks like this. You can see in fiscals nineteen through thirteen, we stayed fairly flat. That's consistent with the great recession that we just went through. In fourteen, as we're coming out of the recession, you can see here that we start to see our turnover trend increase. Our separation rates, this is our turning up, comparing our turnover trend to our market peers. It's, it's amazing how many of our peers did not have this type of data. However, you can see here, these are the peers that we were able to collect the data from. In fifteen sixteen, we were trending with the market. We were at thirteen percent overall, the market was about thirteen percent on average. For the police, we did try to gather some of that, and these are those who tracked it, police separately as well. We were tracking at four percent, the market average was at ten percent. Fifteen, or sixteen seventeen, again, we were tracking with the market. And then seventeen eighteen, you can see we started exceeding the market trend. And then in eighteen nineteen, it's not mature data yet. However, we track it regularly, and we're at twelve percent. You can see that our police department, we've significantly increased this fiscal year. So what are the reasons for the separations? This is a collected report that reflects over the last three full fiscal years of data in the first ten months of this year. I updated it as through April nineteenth, primarily because of the fact that we've had quite a few more turnover in our police department area. And I wanted to make sure that I had up-to-date, as most up-to-date data for you today. But you can see our other employment area is pretty close to our retirees, the number of retirees that we've had. Our voluntary turnover has been increasing, that's the little graph down below. We've been increasing in sixteen, we had a three percent voluntary turnover rate. And the voluntary turnover is the personal and family reasons, and then other employment reasons. And that's been increasing over the last few years as well. So that's just some data for you to think about, and I'll turn it over to Krista. If you have any questions on the data, I'm happy to help her to answer those questions before she gets into the project.
Okay, so we gave you a preview. I think we had a seven or eight-minute block when you all had your strategic meeting a month or so ago, and we kind of gave you an idea of what we'd been working on. So we're just gonna give you a little bit more in-depth information and provide you some more details with that. So what we've done this past year is we've actually taken our compensation philosophy to a new level, so we'll show that on the next slide. We've removed the steps from our compensation plan, so we've gone to an open-range salary structure for this next year. We've developed criteria for performance slotting. So that would be like to bring in a new hire, but also, we did a gap analysis, and we'll talk about that gap analysis, of where our current employees are sitting, and if we had to rehire them. I think we kind of told, talked to you a little bit about that before, and what that value was. We've reviewed the various methods to address those performance gaps. And we've taken our task team, we had an employee task team, and we've gone through some suggestions and some feedback with them, and we've been able to prepare some enhanced benefits for our employees. And we've also worked further to, I'm gonna show you a couple of value statements. I've shared those with you in the past. These are not individual employees, but this is gonna be a comparison of what an employee would see, but we're gonna show you compared to our market, so it'll be a similar type of statement. All right, so this is the total compensation philosophy that we're working towards. It's very important to us to be able to show that our employees, that it's not just about pay. This is something that we feel very dearly about, that we do receive great retirement benefits, and we've been very generous on some of our benefits. But compared to our market, that's where sometimes you hear the, well, we're still not getting up to what the competitors say, or the competitors are. But at the same time, we do wanna show them that if you make X amount of dollars, this is how much the city has to pay on your behalf for those benefits. So that'll be, that'll be important to take in consideration. The, 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 yes, we enhance those benefits. I don't know if you guys can read those comments, but the total compensation approach is designed to attract and retain hard-working individuals who respond quickly, think creatively, and achieve meaningful results. And we wanna make sure that we have that sustainable thing. So on that open-range system that we're talking about, whereas we still haven't gotten step raises for a long time, well, with the open range, if the council can fund at one, one percent, two percent, three percent every year, we don't have to meet that whole five percent step. So that'll allow us to award, or, you know, reward the, the employees as we go. So that's kind of what we thought about our total compensation philosophy. This is a little bit more about that open-range struc-, salary structure. So again, it does eliminate steps. In the past, we've shown you our grade and step system. If you aren't familiar with it, it's very, it's a little bit like the GS system, right? But it's, you know, you've got your grades, and then you've got the steps across. So we'll still have the pay plan, but it'll be an open range. And so if we go to hire someone in, we can actually give them closer to the value of what they are, not just have to start them at that first step. Where that comes in a problem is that we have people that haven't moved through the pay plan, and so then that's why we have to make some adjustments and re-energize that commitment to being able to fund something for you employees. I'm talking off the cuff, and I wanna make sure I'm not missing something, yes.
So, we switched this, will we adjust all of those buckets at one, would that happen?
We can't afford it, but we're going to do, we're going to do something.
It will show you some of the.
Yeah, yeah.
And why, you'll see why we can't afford it.
Yeah, so that gap analysis, it's, it's pretty, pretty impressive, the numbers.
When you bring in new people, they, their, the market, market bears, you know, our. Can the city do that, and women above those, or, or, or adjust those?
Right, so that's that compression issue. And so we are doing a very, and we'll get to that here in a minute, especially with regards to the police department, or hiring those laterals. It's really important to be able to do that. So if I have an employee that I could say, we, and we did this performance slotting exercise specifically to help us with this, and it was amazing, so you have a brand-new employee, and their entry level, that's easy, right? They're in that developmental phase, great. So if I have a couple of those, I'm a, in the CSR department and what are, I've got brand-new people, great. But I bring this rock star in, I don't feel bad about bringing that person above that, if, if they're come with experience, right? Because you can justify, this is how it is. But when you have a police officer, or you have somebody else, and you, it's really hard to skip those, right? So, yeah, we do have some things. And so with Mr. Foggan, we're gonna be working on if we do have that compression, can we make an adjustment here and there on, on the fly? But again, that's on the funding part, so. This is an abbreviated version of our current grade plan. So you'll see from grade two oh one up to the four oh six, we've added in, so the police and the fire, I'll show you the next couple of slides, where we've actually adjusted their scale a bit. We're still gonna have it on the same plan, and we'll probably renumber it. But at this point, that's where they fit in. So you can see the different pink and the red, uh, blue, that's where the, the fire and the police scales have been fitted, because we did have to make some adjustments on that. And then again, if we have that open-range system, we could do a COLA if we needed to, or we could do that, everybody moves two percent, not, not a COLA, but actually move through the pay plan, right? So again, you don't have to go a step, five percent, five percent, you can do that, so that kind of helps. All right, so this next slide, it's probably not easy to read, but on the left is the current police structure. So again, if you look at the position of police officer, which is the bottom left, and you look in the blue section, what we're doing is we're removing, on this particular scale, we're removing the training wage. So what that does for us is it actually increases the top, so they actually have a little bit more width, and that adjusts our midpoint. And then when we hire someone in as a lateral, great, and we are going to be adjusting those police officers, so that's gonna help, so that you can see right there, that alone helped. But then as you go up, we, we weren't able to offer a full fix for the, any of the employees, but this is what we're doing with the pay scale for now. And we'll probably have this conversation each year, like, how can we do this incremental, not on the individual pays, but on our pay plan? This is the fire schedule, and it looks a tiny bit different, because the fire, there's an extra step. We have the fire engineer versus the other ones line up perfectly with the police department, besides the firefighter and the engineer, and then the rest, the sergeant, lieutenants, and then the captain, and the lieutenant, no, sergeant, and then battalion chief, yeah. I'm gonna move now into the performance management aspect of this. So as we said before, we're trying to reward our employees, but we, we know we still have to manage that performance. And so with the, with the performance management system that we had in the past, it was a lot of looking back and, oh, yeah, not goal-based necessarily. You have, okay, do they attend, were they here? I mean, it wasn't that bad, but you know what I mean? So you, you've gotta take that and move it forward, so we're updating that. And the other components is we actually did a really great supervisory training, and it was performance management by the employers' council, and that's that consultant that we, consultant firm that we've used in the past. We did that performance slotting exercise, and I'd kind of like to share a little bit more about that with you. It's pretty exciting what we did. The gap analysis was based on the results of that, and I have some slides and some information on that. And again, that's that internal equity, so we can say, okay, this person's been here for ten years. I don't wanna pay him the tenure rate paid just because they've been here, how are they performing? And so you can kind of get that value. Again, we're not cutting pay, we're not doing anything based on performance, but at least you know as a supervisor how you can coach them up for that value exchange. You've got someone that's underperforming, so it's not, it's now, it's like you're gonna have a little bit more, here's your goals, here's the cascading goals from the council to, you know, for the manager, all the way down, and we can share those with our departments. The performance definitions that we used in the slotting exercises are also gonna be usable in the hiring process. So again, when you go to an open-range system, you can actually go through those. You've interviewed them, you've been able to converse with them, kind of in those, in those, those things. You've got the resume, you've got all their skills, and you can actually kind of plot them against where you would wanna fit them on your, on your pay plan. And again, that doesn't say we're fixed yet on the compression part. And then again, as I just alluded to, we're moving away from that traditional annual to an ongoing performance management approach. And we do have a, a pretty good system right now, it's called TrackStar. I think I've talked to you all about it in the past. And it's just kind of, we've been in this transition process, so we're gonna be re, re-energizing that. This is just a, a fun slide I put together to kind of illustrate the continuous performance management. Once the established goals and expectations happen each year, or for a new hire, you're gonna have that continual process. So it's a one-to-three-month process, so it's, it's ongoing. You see an employee that needs guidance, you're gonna be having that conversation, you're gonna document it. They can document their feedback, hey, boss, I did this, am I on the right track? And it's that conversation that's gonna be documented. HR will obviously keep track of those, and make sure that the managers are actually doing those on a very frequent basis, because we can actually see those comments and whatnot in the system. Okay, so let's talk about the performance slotting exercise that I keep sharing about. So at the time that we had the consultant come in, we had three hundred and thirty-eight employees that were slotted. We had some transitions going on, we had some retiring, we had some people that were leaving us, and any brandy, brand new, we didn't put those through the exercise. So out of our population, we actually sat down with the consultant, myself, or Jackie, depending on what our schedules were, and we went through every single employee, and we used the same criteria, and we went through every single category. And I can be honest with you, chief's in the room, fire chief was like, well, we're just gonna rate everybody high. Didn't happen. It was amazing, they were thoughtful, the supervisors, battalion chiefs, the lieutenants, everybody, they were very thoughtful. They thought, even our public works guys and our, our parks guys who said, oh, how's a groundskeeper gonna get rated any higher? They were thoughtful, we used the criteria, and we talked about it. How were they, what's their decision-making, how, you know, all these criterias, and it was really great. So what happened is then we rated them into performance categories, and then we compiled that, and then we took that, and we did a gap analysis where they're currently placed in the pay, and where they would be paid if they were. We, we formulated that, and thank goodness for the consultant, because he was great with pivot tables, but we came up with these results. So if we were to rehire all of our employees, and this is just base wages, this is not the dreaded employee burden rate with all the public safety or all our ASRS retirement, it doesn't have any benefits, it doesn't have anything, it would be over one point four million dollars. Okay, so that's why we weren't able to fix everybody, okay, because that's not the burden rate. We also looked at, okay, we can't afford that kind of effects, what can we afford? And before we knew what kind of potable that Tina had at the end of the rainbow that we might be able to use on employee compensation, we kind of said, okay, what if we did a ten percent variance? So let's flatten it out, so like if I was in the mastery level, but I was only being paid here, we would kind of bring it up to like ten percent closer. And so we looked at ten percent, twelve percent, fifteen percent, and we really weren't getting there. It was still too much of a burden. So when you see those categories up there, it says entry level, fully qualified level, and those mastery levels. We had those categories, but then we also had some other criteria that we used, too. Does that make sense on the gap analysis? So the task team that we used was comprised of most of our departments, and of course, finance was there. And we were able to kind of pull them, throw things back at them. We would, we would prepare some information, and they would come back with us. We would ask, okay, what other things are you thinking about? If we can't give full raises, you know, how can we address things? You know, would more vacation time help, would this help? And so we kind of got through a laundry list of wishes. We had our finance team price those out, just so, again, we could figure out, here's the pot of gold, how do we then divide that up between benefits and other things that we have to pay for? So we came up with some suggestions, the increasing the holiday. So the benefit and cash compensation study that we mentioned before, we kind of had a list of where all the cities and towns in our benchmark competitors were. We knew what their benefits were. And so we said, okay, the average was eleven, so what if we went to twelve? How much would that cost? And what kind of good positive would that do for the employees? We actually were low on our vacation policy as far as our total accrual rates, and so we actually worked with the manager and with the finance department, and we're going to increase the accrual rates in our maximums. Something as silly as our benefits for our high-deductible health plan. Usually have an HSA account, which the city has always contributed portion of those. We're now gonna pre-fund half and half. That way, we can entice the employees from going from a standard EPO plan over to the high-deductible because of the fear of, ooh, I don't have any money in my HSA yet, I don't know how that's gonna affect me. So I don't know if you guys have any insurance experience, but that can be a change. We did not got that plan, we kept it good, but the prices, we had a cost share differently. So we're in the middle of our open enrollment plan, and we're getting lots of feedback, but we said we do wanna provide raises, so if the, the share of cost on that EPO plan goes up, that's because we are helping, we want you to go to the high-deductible, because it does save the City of Kingman money, but at the same time, you have the, that buy-in, you have skin in the game when you have the high-deductible. So that's kind of one of those choices. You've probably seen on Facebook, we are trying to do like four-ten schedules, we're trying to come up with other things like that, that again, it's that feel-good, it's that work-life balance. So that's, those are some of the things that the departments are asking for, and that we're trying to offer them. So it's that total rewards program. These are a list of other things, and you'll see some of them have the asterisks. Those, those are things that we do offer our city employees that maybe are additional benefited, that, how do I word that? That other cities might not have as rich of programs as we do. Kind of wanna do the Hyatt, like, assignment pay. Now, police and fire, pretty much everybody has, they get CASMAT pay, or they get the paramedic pay. But there's other positions in the city that we might have that they don't get paid for. Inmate certification, or. Inmate certification, or... Yeah, certifications for wastewater. So other, other cities and towns might not have those, so we do, we do like to highlight that. But we, again, we have a really good comprehensive benefits, and so those are just some of those things that you guys not, might not be familiar with.
Do you have one question?
Yes, sir.
On the vacation leave and the sick leave? I know when I worked at the county, we just did paid time off. I mean, this county didn't care why I wasn't there, they just, I wasn't there, you know, it was my time. Is that something that you guys looked at, at just going to like a PTO and emerging sick and vacation, or?
We sure did. It's funny, and I think I'll ask, I'll phone a friend here, but the, the PTO goes back and forth. It's like the trend, everybody moves to PTO, and then it's like, oh, that's more expensive, let's go back this way. So I think that's kind of how it's happened over the years, and I think we have looked at it, and employees think that's what they want, but then all of a sudden, when they realize, I don't have short-term disability, and now I don't have any sick time because I've used all my PTO time, so it's kind of that safeguard in that regard.
Yeah, we have really rich benefit in our, in our sick leave balance. It's basically an unlimited balance an employee can accrue, and it's a, it's a great short-term disability policy that nobody pays premiums for.
Right.
So that's, that's a positive thing that a PTO doesn't have.
True.
Additionally, there's a little bit more manager control over leave taken when you have sick and vacation separately, especially now with the more broad definition under the Arizona Sick Leave Act. PTO, you don't have that manager control, because definitely the first 40 hours under the Arizona Sick Leave Act, they can take sick leave for their cousin. And there's nothing you can do about it. So PTO, how do you track that? Because we don't know why you took the time off, it could be vacation. And so we can't retaliate against you. The Arizona Sick Leave Act has anti-retaliation provisions. So there's, there's a benefit to having them separate versus PTO time. It's nice to have the PTO time because nobody knows your business, right? You can take off any time, and, and as long as it's approved, you, you can take that time off. So there's a positive thing, but there's also, again, there's some strings attached to it.
Sure.
Can you recall in our benchmark cities, how many had PTO versus sick and vacation?
Yeah.
I've, I've looked at it a couple different times, because I'm curious like that, because I worked for the college for those couple years, and we had the PTO, and I know the county does. Param C does, you know, so I know that those employers do the PTO, but I know at the same time, when I worked for the college, managing those people that called in well a lot, or called in sick, you know, because it's like, you, you want them to be there and to do their job. So you have the, you have that little bit of frustration, it's like, hey, you need to be here. It's still a performance conversation, no matter how you look at it, but it, it does help a little bit more when you can have that control. You know, after three days, you can bring a doctor's note and things like that, so.
Great.
Thank you. So as I told you, here is a little tiny statement that I don't know if you can read, but what the top portion does, it shows, this is a, this is an example of a classified employee for the City of Kingman, meaning a benefits-eligible employee. This does not include any PSPRS or public safety, okay? So what I did here, just as an example, was I took all of the benchmark positions and averaged them, and then I took the markets benchmark position and averaged them. So I've got one, I've got another slide with fire and another one with police. But this shows, again, the comparison of the cities that they said, you know, how much vacation, how much sick, and how much holidays, plus that average total wage. So we are down on our average thing from, you can see that base of 55 to the base of 65. So we're down, we know that we're down, we haven't moved across, we haven't changed our pay scale and whatnot. The benefits portion though, you can see our family coverage has been better, so we actually have a plus in that column, and then dental vision was a plus compared to what the city, the employers pay. That's not in their, that's, that's not gonna be in your employee's pocket. So they may tend to say, hey, that's not a part of my compensation, but we wanna show you, this is what we're gonna be doing for employees. What are, what is the city employer, what are we paying for you as an employee? I don't have workers comp on here, because that varies so much for each city and town, so it's not on there. But you can see, just the taxes based on what that would be. This particular example, it shows the value of a, the average employee which got 55,000 in salary actually would have had that benefit of, it'll be over the 81,000, okay? So that, we know that, that's a, that's a pretty great benefit that we have as city employees with the ASRS. And then the market average for other things is on there. Like I said, there's a lot of other benefits that you can't really put a specific dollar value on, but at least we know on that other slide what all the different things we offer. For this one, this is a firefighter, this is an entry-level firefighter. I just wanted to give you a couple random examples, so this is an entry-level fire. So on this one, if you'll look at the very bottom, the total compensation came out to be 88. Now, why it could be different here is that the PSPRS, ASRS rates are consistent, right? You've got, is a total system, blah, blah, blah. PSPRS, though, however, when you look at what the agency has to pay, which we're talking about our, you know, the city's unfunded liabilities. So this is an average, so the benchmark average for the market of our peers was 42.21% contribution rate versus ours is at 48. So again, we can't control what other cities pay, but what we spend on our particular firefighters, the total cash was 48, their benefit was 88,000. So that's not quite double, but close.
A little bit different here too is the, the fire department. We included some of our local fire districts.
Thank you, I forgot to show that.
Yeah, so you do have some smaller agencies there to provide as rich of benefits as, as some of our larger agencies do.
So in that average of, that benchmark average of the 42.21%, this is not completely apples-to-apples, because they might not have all the rich benefits. Districts sometimes have okay benefits because they have smaller employee population, but some of the other ones don't, so it's, it's kind of that. Again, you can make statistics say what you want, but I wanted to give you an average firefighter entry level on this one. And that's one is for our police department. This is a police, this is, yeah, this is at midpoint. So instead of at the entry level, I chose a midpoint one to give you. And so you can see the average wage of our current 2018-19 pay scale was 23 bucks an hour, which is about 48,000, versus the average midpoint of our market peers was 55. So you can see the difference on that. So again, I thought, I thought it would be just interesting to show you where we were. And then again, the average on the PSPRS, ours was the 44.08. And I'm not even talking about tier two and tier three, because on both fire and police, those are a little bit different, but I just did the, the tenured person that was on tier one, and you can see that compared, comparisons, the salary was the 49 to 56, but when we look at the benefits that we pay, you know, it's that $10,000, but again, that's not in their pockets, so. Before I go on this one, the, the next thing that we're gonna be doing with our new MUNA system, we've switched to our new payroll HR system as of January. Jack and I visited the Town of Marana, and we got to ask them questions about how they're using the HR payroll system, and they gave us some feedback as we were setting it up, and they showed us their employee benefit statement, and it was fantastic. So there's a canned one that's in the MUNA system that we'll be able to show pretty soon, as, you know, we're soon to get that data in there, but it, theirs is perfect. So we're gonna be getting our IT guys with their IT guys, and so we'll be able to, we took a step back, once we left ADP, our previous payroll provider and our HR's provider, we lost that one, and so now we have to start over building it in the, the new system, so it hasn't happened yet. But these statements, I, I wanted you to know that we will be providing those to the employees at some point in the future, but we have to get those built first in the new payroll system, so. Thank you. All right, so this slide we just wanted to throw in, you know, we've talked about that we've done those market comparisons and updates. We wanted to show you this one specifically because this is just your local market. This is just comparing yourselves to the Bullhead and Lake Cavissoue City Mayor and Council, and that also that we do not, City of Kingman has not provided the group health plan coverage for the council and mayor in the past, so we wanted to give you that update. I know, sad stats, right? All right. I know, right? So future projects, we are going to be doing another employee satisfaction survey. We wanna do those at least every other year, that way we can keep our fingers on the pulse. Hopefully, when we make these corrections, or again, with your funding, you know, being able to do something each year, or to increase or enhance our benefits like we've done, hopefully that, that will help our employees feel more engaged, and again, feel recognized. We will be doing some further evaluations on our job descriptions and our job classifications, making sure that, again, that internal equity is good, and it's one of those best practices, things that you do that regularly as well. And then we'll do another update and analyze that peer market, so we always have that up to date within, because we can age it, but you know, you lose things when people make drastic changes. That way we can capture those. I think I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Fogg, and Jackie, did you have any other comments?
Do you have any other?
Okay. Absolutely. Really? Yes, absolutely. I, I don't know. Oh, is that?
Yeah, there's no reason, this is a public presentation right now, so. Yeah.
You're just making fun of my plain PowerPoint slides. I should have taken Tina's notes and done a little fancier one. Thank you, very good, thank you guys.
We, we good?
Yes.
Okay. So a lot of, as you can tell, we've spent a lot of time, a lot of work on kind of figuring out where we are and what we, what needs to happen. So as we move forward, I just wanna let you know what that Tina and I have been working on with the team is that we're trying to develop a program that will not allow us to fall behind like we have in the past. As both Jackie and Krista pointed out, the step and grade system has not worked in this community for well over 15 years. I'm not exactly sure, I can point to a time where it actually did work for Kingman. And so moving away from, moving away from that to a hiring point, a min, a max, and a mid is going to give us that flexibility that we need to do. As we do increases, and as we do costs of living, we will know better how, how we're doing and where we're placing people. One of the conversations have been in compression and the concern about compression. We have a plan in place that we're going, we've, we fix, we're fixing compression in the fire and the police department, both vertically and horizontally. So it, just for instance, in this year, in this fiscal year, we've run into multiple vertical compression issues where we've had an employee that is wanting to be promoted within the department that they, they work for, and the, where they were in the pay scale put them above, if we were to give them the correct increase to that promotional position, it put them ahead of people that had been doing the job for five years or seven years. And so we've worked on those, you saw, Jackie has done a great job, her and her team, to create some separation between those positions so that people will feel like they, they wanna be promoted and they wanna take on leadership roles. So we have that built in, that's, that correction's going to happen. The other piece is that in talking with Tina and the team, we have a proposed raise for employees starting July 1st, okay? Until we have the full conversation about the budget, we're not, I'm not really prepared to tell you exactly what that amount is, but we are gonna be proposing a raise as part of our compensation for our employees. The other piece to this is that in talking with Chief DeBries and his leadership team, they've recognized the, the problem with compression within that police officer range, where we've had people that get hired, and then they get stuck there, and then there's no movement, and it has made, the, the problem for us has been, this, of course, as Jackie pointed out, some dissatisfaction within the department, but also it's made it almost, I don't wanna say impossible, but nearly impossible to bring in lateral employees into the organization. And so in, in talking with Chief DeBries, he's looked at his staffing requirements, and basically in consultation with his leadership team, they've decided that they're going to reduce their personnel count by two officers. What that does is it basically frees up, if we take kind of, we take out the total cost of those officers just down to what the, what the wages are, that equates to about $108,000. And so what we've done with that 800, or $108,000 is we've added about $32,000 to that, so approximately $136,000 to $138,000. We're going to be able to fix compression within the police department. We're also going to take about $30,000 and fix compression within the fire department where there was also compression issues. So that, what we end up doing is we actually end up spreading those employees back out in the range where they, where they should be, and depending on number of years, it's gonna be, there'll be a different percentage, and we're making that police department compression fix right now. So that will take it, we're not gonna wait, they've got the budget to do this. We're not gonna wait till July 1st to make this fix, we're gonna make that fix right now. And then we, those employees will still get a percentage increase like all, everybody else does, starting the first of the fiscal year. So that's our plan for fixing and dealing with compression. Like I said, one of the things that we've got, this can't be, we can't be short-sighted on this. This isn't, we'd fix it now and then wait another 10 years. We've, we've gotta have a plan, and I think what you, what you've seen is that basis for the plan, and we've gotta incorporate raises, and we've gotta incorporate costs of living to keep up with the market. We just, we just have to. And that's, that, every time we do that, that's a pinch to the budget, recognizing that we, you know, we're gonna be talking about revenue with you in just a minute. And so those, that revenue conversation is gonna continue to be really important. But that brings up one really important question, and that is, and before anybody can ask it, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give the answer to it, and that is, do we have the right number of people doing the jobs that need to happen? And that is gonna be part of, as we move forward, performance measurements, knowing where we are, tracking good performance measurements, reporting on those, and letting the numbers tell the story, not just guessing, you know, should I have, you know, should I have 10 employees in this department? Instead, we'll, we'll use data to, you know, and it's still, you know, even having the data doesn't guarantee that we're gonna add a position, but at least we'll know that if we have to cut back on a service, why we're cutting back, and we'll be able to advertise that and talk about it. So that's, that's our compensation spiel. I, I think it's a, I think we've got a good go-forward plan, I think we've got a good fix. My hat's off to the chief and his team for, for looking at this holistically. And this will give us that ability to hire in lateral police officers where we haven't really had that flexibility until right now. And, you know, and what we know is that people aren't beating down the door to be police, police officers right now, as an example, across the nation, and frankly, across the world. We, we know that people are not signing up to be police officers like they used to, you know. So that's our compensation.
Specifically about the police department, what I heard you just say is that the compression will be fixed, and then there'll also be some increases, but is, is that enough to make us competitive so that we're not continuing to lose our officers to DPS and Bullhead and?
Okay, let's, let's, I wanna be clear, I, I've, I talked to several of you about this. I want, Jackie and her team do a great job of doing exit interviews, okay? And in those exit interviews, we're looking for reasons why people are leaving, okay? We've had- We've had, if you take a snapshot of, of a point in time, right now, we have two officers that just left to work for the highway patrol. Now, there is, if, but over time, if you look at the last five years, the exiting of officers has not been based on pay or at least they're not saying that it's been based on pay. And the turnover rate for officers has not been alarming. There are communities, I think, Jackie, you correct me if I'm wrong, I'm going to quote your stats, is the exit interview or exit percentages for the, average for the state in police departments is about, has been about seven percent. And we've been, over that five-year period, just under seven percent. There's police departments in metro Phoenix that are double-digit turnovers. So, we're, obviously, we don't, when we hire someone, we want to get them to retire. You will hear me say that time and time again. And that, but that's for a police officer, just as much as it is a public works employee, just as much as it is for a finance person or HR person. So, I, I want to just make sure that, that we understand there's, there's not this huge exodus of, for pay. Now, our pay scale itself is competitive. The, so when you're high, if you're a brandy new police officer to the high point, that scale is competitive. Where we, where we failed to be competitive is in moving people up, up that scale. And because we had a step and grade system, we could never, we could never get anybody moved up because we could, you know, there, there's five employees that just got hired. Trying to move up five employees, five percent each, just was not.
Too much.
It was just too much. So, um, but fast forward to, if we took that snapshot right now with that, we did have two officers leave for pay. They said they left for pay just recently and they went to work for DPS. We, as a community, cannot compete with DPS. Even, even if we wanted to, we couldn't, we couldn't even get close to affording what, what DPS has hired these, these officers for and then guaranteed them, or I don't know if they guaranteed them, but in the governor's budget, basically saying that they were going to get a ten percent increase starting July. So, they went out the door for over twelve thousand more than what we're paying and then they're going to get a, they're going to get a ten percent raise on top of that. And that's just something that we, we simply can't compete with. Where we can compete is you find joy in your, in, in the, in your work. There's happiness there. You enjoy working for the city of Kingman. And when someone comes knocking or calling to, to recruit you out, that you just, you love doing what you, you do. I mean, I think that is a competitive advantage. I, I would love to work in an organization where I know the leadership cares about me. They, they, they worry about me and they want the best for me. You know, you can leave for pay, but I wonder, job satisfaction wise, ultimately, how happy these people are going to be. Just, you know, in a much, much larger organization, you know. So, I mean, we've, we've got some real advantages. We care about our, our folks. I'm not saying that other organizations don't, but I, I think we have a team that really cares. So, yeah, there's going to be some places where we're just not competitive and we will never be competitive. The state can throw that kind of money at officers. It just, that's going to be. Well, yeah, if you want to go work for Vegas, you want to go work for Portland Metro, the metro area, it's, it was a hard, you know, trying, we're, as part of this overall compensation, we're, you know, we're hoping and that employees, as they make these decisions, if you have to, if you have to move, sorry, if you, if you move to, I don't know, California to go work as a police officer in California, I certainly hope you do your homework and not just chalk it up to, hey, I'm making twenty thousand dollars more a year in California than I am in Kingman. There, if you haven't done the cost of living comparison, that, that's, that's kind of on you because I, I would guess that that twenty thousand is going to get eaten up pretty quickly. So.
When we talk about looking at this long-term though, you know, I would go back to what you said about people aren't applying for these jobs with the police department. And so, it is going to get more and more competitive to keep the police officers that we do have and to, to get new recruits to come in because everybody's going to be desperate for police officers. And so, maybe that is something that we need to be thinking about, is that we, we're going to have to be more competitive. The sheriff's office is getting raised, you know, that we need to do that. So, so that's the thing. It's, it's, you're going to have to be more and more competitive, those police officers. And that's why I asked if, if this is really going to stop the bleeding.
If I may, it doesn't totally stop the bleed because you're always going to have turnover, number one. You just need to make sure you have healthy turnover, right? We do have more work to do on the play, pay plan. It is still narrow. We'd like to stretch it out to fifty percent because it's, it's about forty. Market average is fifty percent. That stretches out the mid, market midpoint. When you go on government jobs and you compare our starting wage to government job starting wage, if you take the cost of living factor in, you're going to see we're competitive there. Where we're not competitive, like Ron said, is we're not moving our folks out. And then if we can stretch that, that top end a little further, I think that will help as well. And then again, the lateral, the lateral movement up, we have a little bit more work there to, to prevent more overlap. But we've made a significant impact in that, uh, this year. There is still some tweaking that needs to happen.
And like, and one other thing I, I do need to add to that is that, one of the things that the police department leadership is actively doing with Colleen, I've been involved, is that we're, we're also looking at knowing that, that, there is competition, trying to attract people to, to the profession frankly, is that we, we need to do a better job marketing why it's great to be a police officer. You know, why, why should you be? And so, we've, we've embarked on a, a marketing campaign where, um, we're going to have some videos and some great literature, um, that, uh, we're working with a graphic artist and Colleen. We've actually been, it's interesting, we, we found a marketing plan that was being done by a community in New Zealand and reached out and talked to them. And it's a really great campaign about talking to the youth, about why this is a noble and righteous position to take as, as a young adult. And so, we're, our marketing plan will be to, to target those younger kids. Part of this is in attracting police officers, is that, that the world has changed and some of the rules for being a police officer or recruiting police officers have not changed. So, I'll tell you that Chief De Vries has been meeting with leadership of the post leadership, along with his peers to see if we can't, I wouldn't say get lax in, in our, our recruitment, but get more up to date. You know, it, it wasn't that long ago that you, if you had ink past your short sleeve, sure, you were not an officer, right? That, that has changed dramatically. Obviously, if you had, you know, swear words across your finger, you know, naked, you know, naked bodies and stuff. I mean, there's a point, right? But that, the idea that I can't have tattoos and be a police officer, that, that, that dynamic has changed. And so, there's, there's some stuff that absolutely needs to happen within the police profession that needs to kind of catch up with the times too. So, there's, so there, there are some stuff that we are, that we know can, can make a difference. And we are, they're, they're showing, and the chief, I think, could back me up on this, is that people are showing more of an interest in being an officer. Um, we went through a recent recruitment effort where I think it was seventy-five people showed some interest, which is a huge number. Um, out of that seventy-five, you start whittling that down, right? Thirty, thirty agree to test with you. You put them through the physical fitness portion of it and you lose more. But as, as the post re-looks at their criteria and what, what you can and cannot have done in your, in your history to be a police officer, we can, I think we can hope to see some more qualified individuals. I mean, it's, you know, you, you, for instance, you know, we have veterans that, we would love to see more veterans entering the police service. They've had some good background training and some of those veterans have run into, um, drug issues and that's, that's kind of weeded them out, you know, so that. Yeah, post, yep, post would have to change. And, but they're, they're starting to see that as well. And they're, like I said, the pressure from leaderships, the leadership teams from within the cities are, are making that push. And like I said, not to reduce the quality of the candidates, but some of the background stuff that is now more acceptable in our society has not, the, the, the rules haven't caught up with that, you know. So, anyway, so that, yes, guaranteed more work to be done. Like I said, our plan is to have, uh, increases be more regular, more anticipated and not fall back into this compression issue. And like I, as was pointed out, with this new system, if times are really tough, we could still give, uh, we still give a one percent raise where in the past, it's just, we're, we're not going to have a raise for ten years, right? Or fifteen years or whatever it was. So. That's what we have for compensation. Obviously, we'll talk, we'll show you the numbers when we get to the budget presentation. So. Revenue sources, yes. So, uh, we've, we've talked about this a little bit in our, our, our last budget presentation. And so, what we wanted to do is walk you through, obviously, what we've been talking about, capital projects, compensation, paying back debt, all of that works into this very discussion. I don't believe anybody thinks that you can keep revenue kind of held down and still try to keep up with the cost of doing business. And, and that's to say, if we, if we ever were keeping up with the cost of doing business. Clearly, we see that from, um, capital projects and we clearly see that from the compensation, conversation that we just had. So, what we'd like to do is walk you through, these, these four revenue sources are kind of the, I don't want to call them the low-hanging fruit, but they're, they're clearly things that we are missing within our system, that we've got to have a conversation about. And, and we, I don't want to say that anybody's hiding from it, but it's, when, when things get tough, we, we don't want to talk about these things, but these are, these are places where we've got pinch points in our expenditures that need to be solved. We think these are the places to alleviate or free up some of those pinch points. So, Tina, you want to, you want to walk through these?
Sure. So, I guess first, just what are the purpose for some of these additional revenue sources? And Mr. Foggan really touched on them. One of those is, of course, payment preservation. We lost our funding source last year. And so, of the four funding sources that were identified, of course, property tax and TPT can, can provide funding for payment preservation, our unfunded liability, general government capital projects, and employee compensation. So, just some basics on primary property tax. So, first of all, we know that it's got to go to the voters. So, and it has to be done the third Tuesday in May, that election. And it is similar to sales tax where it can be used for just general operating and capital purposes. Doesn't have to be dedicated for a specific purpose. When we go out and ask the voters for a levy, it's called a base levy. And that levy is, that's established on the ballot, becomes our base going forward. So, that base levy limit cannot be increased, other than what the statute allows for, a, a small increase. But it cannot go back out to the voters and we cannot ask for down the road, we need another couple million dollars or whatever the case may be. That base levy limit, that base limit is, is the base going forward.
So, you better get it right the first time.
So, looking at just some history of RSS values and seeing how they fluctuate, um, you'll see back in two thousand and ten, our assessed values for Kingman, and this is just, just the city of Kingman's boundaries, two hundred and sixty-three million dollars. You'll see that we're not even close to there yet. We're, we're much better than where we were back in two thousand and fifteen, but we're at two hundred and twelve million dollars currently. And you'll see the change year from year. One thing I want to point out on this is, and why primary property tax is not volatile compared to sales tax, is that if we had adopted a million dollar levy, we can still receive a million dollar levy going forward. It just costs our property owners more or less, depending on the values of the assessed value. So, that's, that's the reason why it's such a stable revenue source. So, looking at our current primary property tax rates, um, the current rates and the taxing jurisdictions are property owners pay a rate of ten dollars and basically fifty-nine cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value. So, that's, um, per one hundred dollars of assessed value. So, if we were to impose some sort of levy, you'll see what that additional rate, what that additional rate would impose on our property owners. And, and we put some numbers here purposely and we'll come back to those numbers. But for a million dollar levy, would be about forty-seven cents per one hundred dollars in assessed value, um, which is about an additional forty-seven dollars a year for property owners, per one million dollars. And that's based on the most recent assessed values. Do you want to add anything, Mr. Foggan?
No, after, yeah. Thank you.
Yep, you bet. Um, so, those are just some basics about property taxes, primary property taxes. And then when we move into TPT basics, it can be used also for general and operating, uh, general operating and capital purposes. And of course, depending on the city, depends on whether an increase needs to go to the voters. And we know that we need to take our increases to the voters. Um, those must be taken to the voters in November on an even numbered year. So, the soonest we can take it to the ballot would be November of two thousand and twenty. There is no cap on the rate, but we always want to take into consideration what our neighbors are doing because we want to remain competitive, of course. When we look at our TPT revenues, the categories and the rates, our current categories are retail and use tax. And really, there are quite a few categories kind of lumped into there. Um, we charge two and a half percent pretty much across the board and it generates about seventeen and a half million dollars. Um, those are our estimates for nineteen in the general fund. Restaurant and bar, one percent. And that generates eight hundred and fifty thousand. And then hotel tax is four percent. Each of those two percents generate six hundred and twenty, making a total of one point two four million. So, what else can we do in TPT? We can increase our existing categories by certain percentages. We know that that half percent for pavement preservation brought in about three point two million. It's actually more, based on our estimates for nineteen. It'll generate a little more going forward. We also have, um, a category such as food for home consumption. And that is a new category that we don't currently charge, uh, any, any taxes on. But when you look at what it could generate, if we were to, to impose a full two and a half percent, which is our regular tax rate, you'll see that it could bring in about two and a half million dollars. Um, I don't know.
Okay, keep, keep.
All right. Okay, will do. All right. So, when we look at our, uh, city comparisons, I've shared this slide with you several times and I'm going to share it again with you. So, this particular list of cities in Arizona, we all have similarities. First of all, we do not have a primary property tax and we provide police and fire services. And there are twelve of us. And if you look at that list, we are the only city that does not impose a food for home consumption tax. So, those other cities don't have primary property taxes either, but they all have a food for home consumption. And they're all at the rate, their regular tax rate as well. And when you look at the averages, I just threw the averages down at the bottom of this table. You'll see that the average tax rate for these cities is two point nine two percent. And the average, um, and the average additional room tax rate, you'll see, and then across the board, across to the food.
Tina?
Yes.
Cottonwood, for example, with the county taxes added into that, what is their sales tax? Like, is it nine percent? Is it eight and a half percent?
Same as ours, which is five point eight five plus, actually, if Cottonwood is not. It would be the same as ours, which is five point eight-five plus, uh, actually, if Cottonwood is not in Mojave County, I don't know what the county's rate...
Yeah, that'd be...
But it would be five point six, plus whatever the county's rate is, and that, and three and a half.
Did you get any of those numbers for any of these cities, just what their overall sales tax rate is?
Just the individual cities, not their, not their, but they're all going to have the state tax imposed.
Right, right.
All right.
Okay.
So, so as Tina had, had indicated, one of the things that we looked at, or we wanted to emphasize as part of this discussion is, in looking at, so if you wanna go back to the property tax, the reason why we had, we wanted to show you this bottom, the city levy and rate scenario, is if, to replace, let me start over. We have two point five percent sales tax. If we adopted a half percent for streets for sales tax, and we expanded our sales tax to incorporate food, it would come out to, to be, um, approximately the same amount as what would be generated by that bottom levy number of the five point nine million for property tax. So we just wanted to show you that that's what property tax would look like if, if we took it and equated it to what we needed in sales tax, or what could be generated in sales tax. I think what's interesting about where we find ourselves in the compare, in that twelve-city comparison list of where we are with employee compensation, where we are with capital improvements. I, I think that what we end up with is that two point five million dollars that we're, that we're not collecting in food, and we have no property tax, maybe the, that's the big hole, that we kinda sit around going, oh, kinda, how are we missing this? Or how is, how is, um, Bullhead, or how is Havasu affording some of these thing, these, these upgraded livability things, and we're not? That's where I think, in looking at these numbers, it appears that, that, that we are falling short, is we're missing that, that piece of the revenue stream, whether it's in sales tax, or whether it's in the property tax. I think it lands right here. And so we just wanted to point out that, you know, don't, don't, don't have any delusions of grandeur here, where we would go out and ask for a property tax, and right on the heels of asking for a property tax, we'd also ask for, uh, sales tax increase. You know, we've gotta be a little bit political and a little bit more savvy than that. Um, but I think we've gotta have a plan, and we've gotta, now is the time to start talking about that plan and, and, and marketing what we can do, or what we can do, um, moving, moving forward. And so we just wanted to make sure that everybody kinda saw that. I don't know that we're, we're in love with one over the other. I just think it's important for the council to know where that, where the service delivery hole is, and where the, where the livability void is. I think it's, I think it's in this discussion right here. You know, two point five million dollars is, in, in our, in our general fund, is a pretty big infusion of money. But it certainly still doesn't solve our road issues, as, as we know. And so I don't think that we can stop at the, at, at just thinking, well, this, this, just all our problems go away if we, if we were taxing food for consumption at home. But it makes a pretty, it makes a pretty big difference. So, anyway, that's, we wanted to just make sure that that was clear for everybody. We, we are, you know, the decisions that have been made in the community for our taxing system have, have put us a little bit behind in our, in, in increasing livability. And so, um, when we start looking at these, you know, the twelve, the twelve cities that we're comparing ourselves to, as far as those cities that do not have, uh, property tax, and for us to be the only one on there that doesn't also tax food, shows, shows you very quickly where, where kind of some of our, why we're feeling a pinch point in service delivery, and/or capital projects, and/or employee compensation, so. Any questions about that?
Um, for the, for the property tax, uh, has to, I, I'm sure there's a timeline where we'd have to prove it and start noticing it well before that may...
Yep.
What, what does that look like?
Carl, do you know the kind of timeline on that?
To get it on the ballot? Um, no, not off the top of my head, but it would be probably late fall, for sure.
So that's...
Yeah.
That'd be this fall?
Yeah. If you wanna do it next year.
Right?
But we, but we can get the, you know, if there's more, you know, obviously, we wanna put this out there. We're not gonna just let it fall off the table or forget about it. And so we'll, you know, we'll get some more information, so that you're clearly armed with what you need to know and what the timeline would look like for that.
One of the options I don't see on here that Bullhead has done is a secondary property tax for a fire district. Is that something that, as a council, we can, or debate?
We don't, we don't have a fire district.
I know we don't, I'm talking about creating one.
And, and creating a fire district isn't as easy as it is, as it sounds, because it's not a ballot issue. It's a petition process, where you have to get fifty percent of the, uh, the owners in the assessed value to actually sign petitions. But yes, if you were to do that...
I know, I know, it works, I'm just asking, if we were to do that, would that take the, the fire budget out of the general fund? And that would be funded by a secondary property tax, right? And then the money that we're taking out of the general fund right now for fire would be available for other things, is what I'm saying.
That, that is an option, yep, that is an option.
So I think it should be something that we talk about, if we're talking about everything.
Right, well...
Including property taxes, primary property taxes.
Like I said, we, we picked the easiest ones, yeah. Right, I, I, and guilty of, of picking a co- a few of the easier ones to, 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 to get to, so, but...
I would think that in the near future, we need to have another meeting like this, roundtable, um, separate from a council meeting, so that we can really hash these out and make some decisions. Because we keep, we just keep talking about it, but, but at some point, we're gonna have to really decide what this is gonna look like. We're gonna do anything at all.
Right.
You know, that kinda thing. But I don't think that can happen in a council meeting, it needs to happen in a forum like this, where we can really have some good discussion about what the impact is to our community.
Right.
Okay.
Yep, absolutely. Any other questions about that? Okay, great.
All right, so moving on to development investment fees, um, and the basics of those. So they are fees that are imposed on new development. And they don't require voter approval, and they cannot just be assessed on residential, or commercial, or industrial. They must be assessed on all properties. Um, they can vary, depending on the property category. Um, and they can be used for the following purposes, so you can ha- you can dedicate them to water, wastewater, stormwater, street facilities, fire, police, and parks. Um, they cannot be used for administration, maintenance, or operations, or building city halls, nothing like that. And prior to the adoption of development investment fees, there are three major things that must be done, and that is that land use assumptions must be updated, an infrastructure improvement plan must be created or modified, and we have to hire someone to come in and put together that impact fee report. The whole process from beginning to end is about two hundred and seventy days to implement those. So we did use to have development investment fees from two thousand and seven to two thousand and twelve, but due to the recession, they were eliminated as a way to stimulate development. But this is what our rates look like, um, back in the day. So I picked a few categories, there's actually probably a list of ten or so, but there are a few. And single-family, um, cost a total of, and, and we had general back then also, it did allow for general purposes. We can't any longer have that category. But fire, police, park, streets, and stormwater. So our total, uh, total development investment fee for a single-family residential unit, we collected two thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars per dwelling unit. And then there's some other rates, as you see, they can vary, like I said earlier. What did we collect during those times? We know several of those years were very good years, or a couple of those years were very good years. And you'll see, when we talk about development investment fees, we think it's a really great way to, you know, to generate, uh, those monies. And it is, but, um, not to the tune of millions of dollars a year. And so you'll see, fiscal year oh seven, oh eight, and oh nine, by far were our best years. And you'll see the total that we collected. And as, of course, we entered the recession, you'll see how little we ended up collecting. And these, again, must be, um, spent on growth-related projects, growth-related areas. Um, they can't just be spent on, and they can be spent on equipment because of growth, uh, growth, um, related, um, areas. But we can't just spend them on basic general projects, um, you know, a fuel station for the city, anything like that. Uh, moving on to...
Well, and I just, I just wanted to, to say that our, our current plan is to move forward with development investment fees. So this, this isn't something that we're gonna talk about till the cows come home. This is something that we're gonna work on, we're gonna bring it for official approval for the council, uh, as, as something that we're gonna do. It is clear, um, that, that the development investment fees that we're, we've been missing since two thousand and twelve would've built new parks, would've added, uh, larger playgrounds, would've helped us build, and will help us build a new fire station on new property that we own on the bench. These are all critical pieces of our infrastructure, that we currently sit around looking at each other going, how are we ever gonna build a fire station, right? And how are we gonna put equipment in the bays of that fire station? So we, we are gonna bring this, uh, we will bring this forward, um, to the council. We are planning on, on having development investment fees, if, at least presenting them to you. If the council feels like this is something they're willing to do, um, our plan is to have them in place by, um, the end of next year. So that, that two hundred and seventy days, when, when the clock starts ticking, uh, you know, I think the two hundred and seventy days is the, the, the best, if everything goes perfectly, um, kind of scenario. But that is our current plan, is to move forward with development investment fees. Knowing the infrastructure, due to growth, needs to, we need that, that money to improve livability for the, especially as new people enter our community, so. That's what we have for development investment fees, just wanna let you know that our plan is to move forward with that, so.
Okay. So then moving on to stormwater fees, and I mentioned this earlier on, that we were planning on creating an enterprise fund and, uh, moving forward with actually a storm rate study to assess or impose stormwater fees. So, um, flood control projects currently have one funding source, and that is our flood control district tax. And it is a major problem in many areas throughout town. And then if you remember, uh, that future projects list, we have eighteen million dollars in just future projects that, uh, we need to fund. Stormwater fee can be assessed on inside-city limit water customers, so we can assess that on our, to our utility customers, and of course, inside the city limits. So eleven thousand four hundred residential customers we have, we have about eleven hundred commercial customers. Um, this does not need to be taken to the voters, uh, but we would need to, to have a rate study. And we did include that in our budget, in the recommended budget that will be brought to you. And the timeline of im- implementation for this type of fee is about a hundred and ninety days. So just giving an idea of what revenue could look like, just so you have something to look at. And I'm basing this only on residential customers, because commercial customers will have to probably use a completely different rate than just a flat rate across the board. So looking at this particular, uh, chart, if we were to charge two dollars per month per residential customer in the city, it would generate two hundred and seventy-three thousand six hundred dollars. And then if we were to charge five dollars per month per cus- per residential customer inside the city, closer to seven hundred thousand dollars, just to give you an idea. How does, yes?
Would that, uh, screen, that income, um, on, yes?
Absolutely.
Yep, absolutely.
So how does that affect the property owner, the utility customer? So two dollars per month for twelve months is twenty-four dollars extra in their, in their, uh, utility bill. So if you look at the table to the right, you'll see that an a- average customer's utility bill, if they have all of our services, sewer, water, sanitation, is all ninety-five dollars a month. So add another twenty-five dollars on to that, if we charge two dollars per month. And if we did five dollars per month, we'd need to add another sixty dollars on to that. If they just have trash and water services, you'll see that it's much less, forty-four dollars per month. And then you'll see how that impacts our customers across the board.
Okay, and as Tina said, we are, um, we have learned a lot about our, our stormwater system in this community. Uh, and it's been, uh, I'll, I'll just say that it was a master's education in life. Uh, we, we have seen a lot of flooding and stormwater issues that just absolutely have to be addressed, that we can, I, I don't think we can ignore any longer. Uh, when flooding occurs, uh, property damage happens both, uh, for city facilities, as well as homeowners and businesses. And so it's, it's, we're pretty, it, we're, we're pretty, um, committed to moving forward with this and starting to fix these, these issues before we have another major event, or at least trying to get ahead of it. One, matter of fact, we're ta- we're tackling a, a really big, uh, project right now on Stockton Hill Road, uh, with new, two new culverts, uh, that are between, um, the new, the new Safeway and the Home Depot. And that, that's a good start to a multimillion-dollar project, drainage project that, that need, that needs to be addressed up, up the hill as we go. So those are, those are the revenue streams that we wanted to talk to you about. Um, and that's, that's really, unless there's, there's questions, um, that's, that's what we wanted to present be- before we talk about the, the budget, um, in a couple of weeks.
Thank you. Any questions? I wanna thank you for all the hard work you've done. I, I've seen you meeting, meeting, meeting on these issues, and, uh, just appreciate the direction that you're taking us in this discussion. I'm really glad to see the steps go. I think that system is archaic, and I'm, see people caught in it for so many years, and I'm, I'm glad that that is, that is important. And I thank you for the talk on the revenue. I, I, opinion, my opinion, is move as quickly as possible on that. So, thank you, that's...
Hi, the only thing I would like to say, it was a good, good first step, right? Um, I'd like to ask, if we could, um, it sounds like there's a lot more tough conversations that we're gonna be having. We were talking about primary property tax. Um, I'd like to include, if we could, for, you know, um, discussion, council discussion about, do we wanna pursue a secondary property tax at a fire district in Kingman or not? It's something that I think is worthy of discussion. It works well for Bullhead City, um, and with our revenue problems here, or what we experienced, I think it's worth discussion, whether or not the council wants to move.
Sure, yeah, yeah, we can put the, we can do the homework for that, not a problem.
And I agree with that. I would also like to ask that, um, you know, in that comparative cities for food tax, I don't relate to a lot of cities and, and being our peer cities. Yeah, maybe I'm biased, but, but I do think that, uh, I'd like to see a broader scope of choosing food taxes in the state, and, um, just other than just those two.
If I could ask for, you got the data from, um, Arizona Cities and Towns, a more broader scope of the hotel tax in Arizona?
Absolutely.
What the rates look like?
Yeah.
No, that's easy. Yeah, and again, the twelve cities, it's not, wasn't the point to, to think that we're a comparison to those. Right.
And that's a tall order for any city to, to take on, so you have to look. That's all you have, you have to look there, but, um, I understand.
Yep, absolutely.
Could we get an updated, um, all these budget meeting stuff? 'Cause I had to switch phones.
Yeah.
I lost my calendar, like, all the budget meetings that we...
Yeah, so the, there's two... Yeah, so there's two, two full budget meeting days, May 9th and May 10th, that says Thursday and Friday. We've got times for that?
Yeah, nine to one.
Nine to one on, for both days.
They'll be here, yep, in our, in our new space.
I don't even think you need one, but you can take me anywhere.
I'm going to adjourn.